Legions. Running under God and in this world with the ready justice for all. Ken, thanks very much. Appreciate everybody's attendance here this evening. Hope everybody's summer's going well. One month left to go, more or less. So to start off, we have the administration of office, Office. And before we do that, I will do the resumption, which is point five dash zero one two seven, to appoint Regina Ceslak to the volunteer village board code of ethics for a term commencing on April third, twenty twenty-five through April seventh, twenty twenty-eight. So, any questions, comments?
No, we're happy to have you.
Yeah. So with that, one in favor?
Aye.
One in favor?
I don't know. Who made the motion?
Who made the motion? Who seconded? Well, we didn't hear.
Oh, the motion actually was burned, my apologies.
Burned?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Donna on the second.
Donna?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Come on up here.
Did we vote on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all in favor now. It's four zero one.
Susan.
Yeah.
Regina?
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat that?
Left leg.
Hi Regina Ceslak.
Hi Regina Ceslak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New York.
And the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a code of ethics board member.
Of a code of ethics board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
You're stepping up.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'm Brady.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to step up. Next on the agenda is a public hearing regarding stormwater management MS four and informational meeting. We'd like to introduce David Fritz. He's our engineer from Goi Howser in Etzel, and he's the lead engineer for the MS four. And we're here today to talk about what they call a swamp plan, which basically are stormwater mapping project and all of MS four under the big umbrella. So without further ado, we're doing this meeting for informational the stuff, as you all know, is on the website for your review. And at any point in time, if someone is reviewing it, if you had any questions, you know, feel free to ask questions and we'd be happy to give you the answers. So with that.
He's a care.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. As the mayor indicated, my name is Dave Fritz. I'm with MHE Engineering, and we are the MS four consultants for the village. So, as he was indicating there, this is a public hearing to solicit any comments that you may have in regards to the village's stormwater management plan and annual report. So just a very, very quick background overview. So some time ago, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, or DEC, designated the village as what's referred to as an MS four, which stands for municipal separate storm system. In general, it simply means that the village has a publicly owned and operated stormwater conveyance system, which collects stormwater or rainwater and discharges it to water basins of the US. The MS four designation also carries requirements from the DEC to comply with their annual permit. Two of those specific requirements, and there are a lot of them, but two of the specific requirements are one, that the village create, implement, and maintain what's referred to as a stormwater management plan. It's a voluminous document, but it, in essence, details the village's plans and procedures and protocols to manage stormwater and comply with the DEC. The second is the filing of an annual report by or before April first of every year, which is done in regards to specific DEC permit requirements that the village has to adhere to. Both the stormwater management plan and the annual report have been prepared. They've been filed. They are available for viewing at the village clerk's office. As the mayor indicated, they're also available on the village's website under the MS four section. There's a link there where anybody at any time can come in and ask any public questions or comments or anything that anybody has. And then that brings us back to tonight, which again is a public hearing, to solicit any additional comments that anybody may have or questions in regards to the village's stormwater management plan or the annual report. So, that being said, any questions or comments that anybody has or would like to bring up?
Great job.
I was wondering, Washington, are there any deficiencies in our current plan?
I don't think that there's the stormwater management plan that's been prepared complies with the DEC permit requirement. But the permit requirements change every year. They have six-month requirements, one-year requirements, two-year, three-year, five-year, and then the permit, the current permit expires in, I believe it's twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. And then there's a new set of permits. So right now, the stormwater management plan is in compliance with all the permit requirements, and we're currently in the process of updating it to comply with the two-year requirements.
So there's no qualifying comments or statements in the filings that we are in compliance with all the requirements of the current legislation?
There are, the plan itself is in full compliance with everything. With all MS fours, there can be items that need to be continued to be looked at or addressed and stuff, and that's the purpose of the whole thing, is to take a look at it and see if there are items that are out there. And we look at those each year. We make an effort to identify them, to address them, and then that annual report has all the items in there. And as you go through that, it's a fairly lengthy report. We have to check the boxes and stuff. And if there is something that isn't caught or isn't met, then it's presented that way, and then a re-effort is made to try to present it.
Is there any place, is there anywhere our storm drains are discharging other than the wood?
That I couldn't tell you. I'd have to, I would have, I would have had to brought a map, an outfall map. I would say yes, absolutely, because the outfalls are anywhere where a stormwater system ends and discharged. So, but I would have to look at the plan to tell you specifically if there was other places besides it. But I would say yes, because they discharge the wetlands, they discharge other places.
Sir?
Four line, April lane. Who, the DEC regulates this?
The permit is written by DEC, yes.
Okay. Back in, back in the late seventies, early eighties, they used to clean out the storm drains. Used to take cover off and clean out all the garbage that collected. Is that a requirement, or is that?
It is.
Who, and is it the DEC that oversees that? Because I haven't seen it done in years.
The DEC makes it a permit requirement, and then the village is responsible to go out and clean those periodically. I believe that in accordance with the permit, there are, there are a lot of items that have to be done in different periods of time, but I believe the catch basins have to be cleaned, I believe it's once every three years. This is based on the current permit requirements, which just recently came out about two years.
Can I ask the board when the last time they were cleaned?
I'll give you that info. I don't have off the top of my head know what that is. But there is, like, one of the requirements is street sweeping. That's an annual event. Obviously, we do that more than an annual schedule to keep the roads clean. And keeping the roads clean, obviously, will keep the storm drains clean. But I don't, I'll have to check. I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head. I mean, during your tenure, did, and like in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, going backwards, do you guys recall ever doing it?
Nope. During your tenure before yet, before that, you recall doing it?
You know, there was a period that we were renting a machine, and we would have to rent the machine.
We had the machine with the, with the, with the, it was like an excavator. It would go down.
Yeah.
And that was not, I'm talking about nineteen eighty.
Not for storm drains.
Yes, yes, storm drains.
That's pretty difficult.
Back in the seventy, seventy-eight, eighty, it would take a cover off.
What they're using now are the hydro vac trucks.
Oh, that's.
And that's, that's really the only way to get any kind of shovel down there to pull any, any kind of mud out. But, but yeah. Well, I mean, it's one of the requirements that we have to do. We're also inspecting sewer lines, which is a totally different subject, with that's ten to twenty percent per, per year. Some of that has been going on. But this, this DEC program, all I can say in reading and going to the classes, and thank God for, for these guys, it is a tedious, tedious process. And if you're not a DEC person or do what you, what he does for a living, it's impossible for anybody at any level in the municipality, unless you're an engineer, to follow these guidelines to get things done. And by the time you get to twenty twenty-eight, and they change it again, this whole process, as I'm, as I go to the classes and I listen to everybody moaning and groaning, is that they're flipping all the responsibility that you would give to them, to the municipalities, and making it difficult to go through all this data, create the data. Like, one of the things, and I don't remember the year, but sooner or later, discharge water into the mudna will have to be tested. And that is going to be part one of the requirements. So it just gets harder and harder every, I want to say almost every year, at the end of the day. But, but back to that question, we'll, we'll find out when we last did it. Okay?
The catch basin on Avorn, on the north side, I wish you could call it catch basin, the wetlands right there, it was always maintained. As I remember growing up, you got these things, you gotta go out there and mow that, because it flooded where the catch basins drained into the stream. Sometimes it would overflow into that land down there. We haven't touched that land in forever.
You're talking about the retention pond?
Yeah, the dry retention pond.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's a small stream that runs through there. If you follow it all the way up, right?
Yeah, I know.
It goes up past Capitol and then into the woods.
It used to maintain it, it used to maintain that catch basin.
Well, I don't, I walked that area. I have seen the inlet. I've seen the outlet. And the inlet is clear. There's nothing in, in the way of it, but the drain that you're talking about, I'd have to specifically know which one, because there's lots of storm drains.
I'm just saying, we used to maintain that, that land right there, you know, out the door, there was a flood, or a substantial amount of rain coming down that, you know, used to get those heavy rains where that stream would just flood those houses.
I've reached, yeah.
I've reached out to DEC, and I haven't really got a definitive answer for some of
this stuff. So for example, it's, it's a retention detention pond. So is there any responsibility on our part, any regulation that says we have to basically mow that area so that there is no little saplings of trees or the grass that's three or four feet tall? But it's designed to be wet. It's designed to collect the water and then feeds it into the inlet, which goes under Avorn, which then hits the stream that runs underneath the footbridge at Avorn and Burn Island Park, and then eventually out to the mudna. So it's working and doing what it should be doing. To the fact that we've been mandated that we have to mow it and maintain it as such, I haven't gotten a definitive answer. And we're, you know, trying, trying to get that, trying to get that answer. But we do know about the ponds. If we're, we can do work on the ponds, but we can't disturb the area, the shoreline of it. If we did that, then we would need a permit for sure. But if we want to go down, which we want to do, is clear some of the trees off of, bring them back down so people, you can see the lake. And that's one of our, one of our goals to get done this year as well, but, but not to disturb the shoreline, which would require a permit. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it. Talk to you soon. So, let's see. Now, public comment in regards to agenda items? Paul?
Yeah, I got a couple. I don't know if it's on the building inspector one?
Yep.
There a salary attached to that?
Yeah, salary is one twenty an hour.
How much?
One twenty.
Oh, a hundred and twenty.
Yes, one twenty, hundred dollars.
So, he'll begin, he would get that salary while he's getting paid as the village engineer?
Well, when he's not on salary, he only gets paid if he does something for the village.
Right.
This appointment is as a backup.
Why is it only till April?
Well, because we'll be doing our new appointments come April. So it'll be into the normal cycle.
So while we, while we get this one, will we lose the other town building inspectors?
No, no. No, we're actually wanting to continue with the IMA. We're just waiting for the town to update that IMA, which is an inter municipal agreement, for people might not know. And we're going to continue that relationship.
On the, on a public hearing for one depot straight, the historic application?
Yes.
Who submitted that application for it to be?
Corner Candle Shop.
They, they submitted the application?
Yes.
And now you guys are going to be the historic preservation board that's going to determine it?
Correct.
Who owns it?
They do. The same owners.
And the, the summer help, how long do the summer help work, the kids that we hire?
Generally August, when they go back to college, or they have vacation, family things, and it's normally August.
So this, this poor guy's only got a month. He only got a?
Well, to this guy, he, I want to say he's a little bit older. He's not in school. Got laid off from a job. And we have one of our, so we're only going to really have two, but one of our, our summer helpers who is school age, I think he's going into the army, he was having trouble with the schedule. So he has not been working, so we picked this gentleman up to continue with the mowing and doing the summer stuff. We'll see if anything develops after that. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay. FYI, the wells are at twenty-three feet, holding strong. The Orange County Mobile DMV unit will be at the village hall on August twenty-ninth, normal hours, ten to twelve, and then one to three-thirty. Again, they do everything DMV-wise except for written exams. Update on the Department of Public Works, those guys are pursuing their classes. We did look around fall, and the only school that seemed to be responding is Dutch's School of Driving. It will be the classes that they'll take for automatic transmissions, not manual transmissions, as we were talking at the last meeting. So there, I believe there'll be three at one point, but Angel is, I think, at a point, and Nicomonte are at a point where they'll be heading to school.
So at the last meeting, we weren't sending, we didn't know we were sending them?
Well, now we do, because we made the phone calls, and Dutch's School of Driving was the only one that responded.
How many vehicles do we have that are automatic? Are the vehicles that we have?
They're all automatic.
They're all automatic?
All automatic.
All dump trucks?
Yes.
There you go.
Yep. And any truck we purchase in the future will be automatic.
How, how much is the training going to cost?
Three thousand seventy-five.
Each, how many drivers?
Currently, we're probably looking at three guys.
Nine thousand dollars.
At some point. But right now, one for sure, the other ones are still taking their tests and.
Did we budget for that?
Huh?
Did we budget nine thousand for that?
Yes, it's in the DPW budget. Okay. So that's where we are with that. Frontier Communication, telephone line conversions. So as we mentioned several months ago, we were in the process of installing a new telephone system, which is a voice over IP. And the system has been installed. It's working great. I'll let Steve maybe just give an update. Because really what's happening here is we're getting away from the Frontier line charges. So if anybody has a POTS line at your house, right, just a two-wire for a fax or something, you know you're paying somewhere in the neighborhood to thirty, maybe sixty bucks, depending on what you're doing with it. But by us converting, and we're basically dropping the Frontier analog lines to voice over IP lines, so we're losing all of those charges that we were getting from Frontier. So, do you want to add anything cost-wise or at least an approximate?
Basically, we were spending well over four thousand dollars a month between the whole village. And right now, it's a new company. I don't have everything converted yet. We're still working on our sewers and wells. There are dialers for emergency. So we met with them last week, and they're figuring out a plan of how to get it to work with their system, which they said they can do it. They just got to figure out how. In the last month, I converted all four fax machines in the village over, and the lines we've been doing since probably the beginning of April. And right now, we're spending about eight hundred dollars a month as opposed to over four thousand. I couldn't find all the bills to give an exact number, but it's going to be over, it's over four thousand. I got to that point, and I know we're missing some. And that's basically where we are. We converted over the data at the police station and the fax machine. We're done, and we're just waiting. That's the last one other in sewer and wells in the whole village. It's the push button that they come to the police station, press the button, they call inside. If they'll be answered, it converts to nine-one-one. So that's the last one we're doing now. We're figuring that one out. And that should be done hopefully in the next week or two. We did the elevator here. I mean, everything's done except for wells and.
Lift stations.
And the lift stations. And those, they said they can do them. They're just figuring out the best and most, least expensive way for us to do that.
Great. Any questions from anybody in the room? Yeah, Bill.
So when the budget was approved, was it, do you not expect it four thousand a month or a new?
No, not four thousand.
So we budgeted four thousand, you're not spending less than a thousand?
Right. We're going to save well over three thousand a month. Next, thank you very much, Stephen. You did a really great job on that. And continue to, because it's a, it's a daily thing until it's all done. Just a note on local sales tax. See if some emails in regards to our overall state tax dollars, basically totaling eleven point nine billion dollars for the first half of twenty twenty-five, which is up three point seven percent over the prior year, which is a good sign. I emailed the county exec to see if we will be able to get any of that money. In the past, they have been able to make some adjustments. There's kind of a, I want to say a fixed fee, I guess, when they start their budget. But knowing that they're going to be getting some additional dollars, I shot them an email and wanted to ask if there was going to be a higher check towards the end of the year, first quarter of next year. So more to come on that, but that's, that's a good sign. Also, Knights of Columbus, had a little meeting presentation last week. They donated twenty-five hundred dollars for their future Woodfield basketball courts. So we have that, and we will be, they're also presenting to us a, they're going to give us a plaque, because they also donated twenty-five hundred dollars for the pickleball courts. And we'll put a plaque up on the fence at the pickleball courts in recognition of your donation.
Do you want to even know that once we get the fence up?
Yeah, and then probably when we have the fence up at Woodfield, we'll be able to get that done. North Street update, the paving project is moving along. They're going through all their markouts currently. Attorney's working on contracts. And again, this will be for the drainage work, because the paving and so forth is a state bid. That's already been set. He's been, the paver has, the company has been notified, and we're just waiting for the work to commence. And we'll be, as we mentioned at the last meeting, shutting down North Street while this work is being accomplished, and then reroute everything up further to drive in the interim while that work is being done. So we'll keep you abreast of that. Price quotes, we're also looking at paving Tower Hill, Auton, Auton Court, and Bristol Court. We have, because of the deterioration of the road and the underlayment of stone, we're not really sure what we have there, because some areas seem to be a lot deeper than others. So we're, we have advanced testing coming in to do core samples of the road. So we'll know if we need to either bring in extra, at the end of the day, what the reclamation or what happened to the road and if it's going to require any more fill or stone or anything else. So that's planned out for this Friday on those roads, and we'll keep you updated as to the progress on that. Also, the village for our historian, Gievi Resuabel, she had applied for William G. Pomeroy Foundation Award for a historical plaque to traditional blue and gold leather leaf for Sewell Park. And they, we had received that, which is great. She does a really nice job with that. And we received two thousand fifty dollars to cover the cost of the historic marker, which will go on that property, since we have the check in hand. As discussed with David just a few minutes ago, we have the MS four mapping, which is a huge undertaking, again, because that is managing all the storm drains, outlets, inlets, the whole, whole nine yards at the end of the day. So we applied for a grant for eighty thousand five hundred dollars for that to be covered under keeping pace with the MS four requirements. Does anybody have anything else you want to bring up? Just a note, I have the building department. Do you want to?
The last two weeks, in July, we brought in just under five thousand dollars. It's more than four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars in two weeks for building. We're over a hundred and ninety-two thousand in the building department.
Yep. And the office is getting a lot busier. Applications are coming in pretty heavy. We just received an application for the TD Bank, right, the one on the right, TD Bank, that was purchased by a dentist. He's planning to put a dental office in that location, that building. So we received the application. The building department will be reviewing it for, you know, interior renovations, that type of thing.
This will be able to drive it?
Yes, you can, yes, you can drive by, take cash, and get your tooth done at the same time. I wish. It's too easy. So, yeah, we got that going on.
Planning board, they're first application before then, in a couple of years then, coming up?
Yeah. So we have the planning board, new board. They'll have their first meeting on the twelfth, correct, on the Tuesday? The application is for the vacant building at thirty-two West Main Street is where the pharmacy, the bagel store is. So an application will be coming in or is already in. The meeting will be scheduled. Needs to be a special permit because of the use of what they're trying to do is basically a venue-type business.
For events?
Sorry?
An event venue?
Yeah, event venue. So like for catering events, you know, business meetings, birthday parties, that kind of stuff.
Not prepared food. So, I mean, prepared in advance, but not.
No, no kitchen. So they would be all catered in, and however they do it. But they, with a business. But they put a business plan together, the whole nine yards, it looked really nice. And hopefully, everything goes well, and we wish them a lot of luck. We also had the ribbon cutting ceremony for firehouse roofing, which is, I'll call it seventeen A and B, the old Spears Cycle Shop in the back. He's renting the whole place, renovated the front, looks really good, made it offices, and he'll be running his business out of the front end. The back end right now is just under construction. He hasn't done, really doesn't have any plans for that at this point, but it's looking, looking good. And then hopefully with the corner candle shop, things seem to be moving along there. And we'll be dealing with the historic preservation application and moving forward hopefully with that. So a lot of nice things happening in the village. So take care of your local mom-and-pop shops, please. Think here first before you jump in the car or you open up your laptop to buy something at some other place. They're really good places out there, and they're, they're working hard and they need our support.
They're using in the park too, the last, probably, well, hopefully, the last two weeks in August and through September.
Yeah.
It looks like it's gonna be on Saturdays right now, Saturday evenings. Trying to get a lineup of bands, kinda take it for a test drive through the early fall, and then start fresh next summer.
Next summer.
Kind of get them a little weekly, and set Sewell Park.
Anybody else say anything? Good, okay. With that, we will jump into the resolutions. We already took care of zero one two seven. Next is Resolution twenty-five zero one twenty-eight to appoint engineer Jim Ward as village building inspector until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Have a motion? Motion to Steve, second to Donna. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment.
Yep.
We discussed this, this is also in support of our IMAs, Tom said earlier, we don't really grow, but this is for specific types of projects.
Right.
Not just, right, just.
Yeah, not every day, kind of, building department things for decks and things like that. This would be more, I'll call it, project-related, larger-scale things that would be going on.
It makes sense, because he's our engineer anyway, so rather using building inspector time and still having our engineer having to review the project, it just makes sense that he takes those projects.
Right. And he's the planning board, zoning board, engineer as well. So one-stop shop, doesn't have to change hands, and you can follow it right through to the end. Okay. Have a, may I have a motion to second, comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one two-nine to accept the retirement resignation of village police officer Charles Martin effective Wednesday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second, Vernon, all that with regrets. And.
Twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight years. We had to walk out that day, it was really, really cool, first, first time for me seeing a walkout.
Really?
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't happen any other, any other times.
No.
Where does that? No, I don't, I was still in the town, I think I was in the town before.
You were a wood person, you know?
Sure. Oh, but it, okay, that's my first one. So, Paul, did you say something?
No, I said you were a wood person when Serena walked out.
That's right. Okay, any other comments, question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three zero, designate the village board as historic preservation board. That will meet as necessary based upon receipt of application, motion?
Motion.
Second, Vernon. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three one to approve of the public assembly permit for Washingtonville Football Cheer Camp to be held at Vern Allen Park on Monday, August fourth, and Tuesday, August fifth, twenty hours of nine AM and twelve PM. Motion?
Motion.
Steve, second, Vernon. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three two, to approve a facilities permit for Congressman Ryan Care's van request to be located at the village hall on Wednesday, November fifth, from eleven AM through one PM. Have a motion?
Motion.
Vernon, Steve, one second. Comments, it's really for him to be here, we'll obviously publicize it, his office is publicizing it. So if anybody had any questions, you know, kinda more federal level, Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, that's why they're coming down. So, and he takes that, obviously, his van on the road and goes to different municipalities. All in favor? Motion passes for zero one. Resolution to accept the proposal of Gary Orgerich, L.A. since land surveyor, for the surveying services, certified boundary survey and topography in connection with Sewell Park location on Main Street in the village of Washerville, and of course, not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars. Have a motion? Vernon, second, Steve. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three four, to approve reliable pump and well service LLC to provide service for the installation of replacement by five-four sixty-gallon per minute Franklin pump at the Fireman's Memorial Park, and of course, not to exceed eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Have a motion?
Motion.
Donna, second. Steve, questions, comments? All in favor? Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three five, to approve the submission of the New York State Consolidated Funding Application Number one-five-two-zero-nine-zero, MS4 mapping grant in the amount of eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, second, Vernon. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three six, schedule a public hearing date regarding One Depot Street Historic Application to be held on Tuesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM. Motion?
Motion.
Steve, second, Donna. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three seven, to authorize the employment of Christopher A. Schroeder as Department of Public Works Summer Health commencing Monday, July twenty-eighth, at an hourly rate at sixteen dollars and fifty cents. A motion?
Motion.
Second, Donna, second. Steve, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three eight, to approve the facilities permit used for the Alcohol Drug Awareness Council Overdose Awareness Day to be held at Vern Allen Park on Sunday, August thirty-first, between five PM and nine PM. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second, Vernon, second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one three nine, to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds and pay the village warrants. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, second, Vernon. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero one. On the warrants and the A fund, we are paying one hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cents out of our water fund, thirteen thousand ninety-seven dollars and two cents. Out of store, four thousand and four dollars. Did everybody sign it? And public comment on any item? Yes, sir.
In the line from Rock, um, let me go back to the comp plan. Can we ever meet the Federation on the Kazazlan?
No.
Not, but.
It's still being discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, conversations.
Okay. Are we still, are we still water emergency going on in some of the roads as well?
Yeah, my understanding, yes.
Because those trucks are rolling nonstop.
Yep.
I'd be down among, coming down to a way, they have to be down among, it's atrocious. The village board should step up and send them a letter to condemn what they're doing over there. Because taking down mountains, creating a water emergency, self-inflicted, we're basically just allowing it to happen. And this is what I've talked about over the last two years.
Yeah.
This is crazy, crazy what's going on on two O eight.
Yeah.
And they don't have water. And, and we're, we're just trucking them water, and Tam's got more trucks than Spindler, and he's just rolling through.
Yeah.
I don't wanna comment, I know, just, it needs to be condemned by the board and make it known publicly that we're against that. We're against the, the malice of mountains. What's gonna happen across from Round Hill with all that land, from Round Hill to ninety-four? How, how many more units can they, can they put up? And they don't have the water. And, and it's just, it's just, it's gonna affect us, when you say, you can't say it's not.
There's a meeting, it's not the main work, they're doing something.
You can't, this, you can't sustain it, I'm sorry. During the comp plan, we talked about aesthetics in the building, all the time. That word aesthetic came out probably every meeting, every meeting. You guys talked about it, I watched it online when I was away, about the food truck, okay? We tell, we tell businesses what color their signs gotta be now on their buildings. It's got six signs along the road. Six. I just wanna know, is yellow, and orange, and red, is that part of our palette? Because that's what color those signs are, there's six of them, right in front of that food truck, right now, and he's closed. It's a self-contained unit. You do the service in there, you make the food, and you do your sales in the unit. We're allowing them to advertise along the road, there's six signs. We have a law on the books that prohibits those signs, those temporary signs. Why is he allowed to do that? And if we have two, two food trucks in there, are we gonna have twenty signs there? How many, like, how far do you allow him to expand? Well, I'm all for vendors, fine, I'm a vendor, I know how it works. But they're basically giving carte blanche of the entire parking lot, unacceptable.
I wasn't aware, and I made.
You just gotta drive by, they didn't.
I did drive by, I've not noticed six signs.
Six signs, and there now.
All right, I'll take a look, and I will address it.
Han, one says han. Han could have, there's some.
Wait, so how do you know that's their sign?
Because his logos are on all of them.
Oh, oh, no, if they are, they are, well, the one, han.
Um, it's your one.
Well, like.
Okay.
We talk about aesthetics.
No, I'm.
It's unacceptable, you know, it's like shit, yeah, I'm gonna be honest.
Didn't notice it, and I'd.
We'll address it tomorrow.
The fact that we allow him to stay there and occupy a spot, it's mobile, it's self-contained, it should be removed. It's aesthetics, remove it, it's a parking lot, it's a commuter parking lot for us. Now, the place across the street's gonna have a venue. I don't know, I don't know what the occupancy is that place. There's no parking there in the beginning with all those other businesses.
There's parking there and across the street.
You've got parking in the back.
Okay, but we got a food truck that just sits there and taking up spots. And, and we allow him to stay there. It, it's unacceptable, the aesthetics look like shit.
Taken. We'll address this one tomorrow. Nancy?
Hi, Nancy Allison for Emerson Drive. I just wanna know, is anything going on with that house on North Street or the fencing?
It's still, they were shut down, their, their permit was pulled for quite a while, several months, because certain things in the project did not need code. They got their permit back, they started their, continued with their renovation. The fence, I am now being told, it was supposed to be temporary fence during the time that the permit was revoked. I'm now understanding there are holes in the property, in the ground, that are hazardous, so the fence should remain out until it doesn't exist anymore.
And, and my other question is, is a lot of weeds, like, trying to pull out, um, like, Adrian onto North, talk about that area?
Yeah.
There's a lot of weeds, like.
It blocks the, blocks the vision.
Rather than the miney.
The sidewalk, yes, I understand, I know.
And then coming up to the school, there's all weeds, like, does anybody clean those weeds, where the trees used to be?
It depends where it is, some of it is DPW, some of it is private property, so anything that's village property, we can address with our DPW when they come. I know I get it myself coming out of Woodfield when I have to make a left going on to one bolt. It's almost creating like a blind spot.
Another one, yeah. And, and that's, speaking of that one too, I don't know, it was on the corner. They put a chain link fence, because I guess that's what they were allowed.
Where, Nancy?
Emerson and Tolen, um, years ago. And then they put bushes, because I guess you're not allowed to have a privacy fence on the corners. Same thing, it's like trying to pull it out of that, of our corner, because they put bushes and, and evergreens, I guess, to put privacy, but it's like.
Creating a blind spot.
It makes it hard to, I watch trees.
The corner of Emerson and Bolt?
No, Tolen, Tolen.
So when you're going out towards home and making the left, that's where the bushes are?
Yeah.
House on the left?
Yes.
The yellow one, I think it is? Gold is the color, yellow, all right. We'll take a look, Nancy.